Call to order this special meeting of the Monument Town Council Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
Public, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, will you take role, please?
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Councilmember Romanella?
Here.
Mayor Protem King?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Here.
Mayor Lakine?
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Here.
Um, okay, before us, we have an agenda. Uh, there's, yeah, that's on this list, but we have an agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? If not, then look for a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we accept the special meeting agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, up next disclosures of conflicts of interest, Mr. Cole, has anybody, um, presented?
I'm allergic to Wednesdays, does that count? Okay.
Okay, and, um, we do have, um, one thing, and that is, uh, it is Councilmember Kimpel's 29th birthday.
Yeah.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kimpel.
He doesn't say happy in here at all.
Right.
He's not a happy guy.
All right. Um, okay, so first up is, uh, three A executive session pursuant to section 24, six dash four, two, four, F CRS regarding personal matters involving the town manager, who's been notified of the executive session. Mr. Cole?
If you would, uh, like to convene in the executive session, uh, to, uh, to discuss this item, the motion should include the information, uh, in, in the agenda. Mr. Foreman is aware of the executive session. He does have the ability to, uh, ask for it to be discussed in public meeting, or we can sit. Maybe actually even talk about that side of it. This is what I'm. Let's say an executive session.
Okay, then I would look for a motion to go into executive session.
Do we want to make a motion for each one separately? Are we just doing one at a time? Well, I'll start with the first motion to move into executive session pursuant to section 24 dash six dash four oh two, uh, sub four F CRS regarding personnel matters involving the town manager who has been notified of the executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel? Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero. Uh, we will be performing the executive session, uh, in council chambers.
Don't you want to do the second?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS, twenty-four dash six dash four two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding personnel matters.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero, and we will be coming back after our executive sessions, uh, because we have a couple other items on the agenda that we still need to address. Uh, so that being said, we are going to host the executive sessions here in council chambers. Will, if you could do your magic to the teams, uh, session, so that, uh, audio video is blocked. All right, we are back in our, uh, public side of the meeting. Um, we've just come out of executive sessions. Um, we've discussed the performance review with our town manager. We want to have a follow-up with you on June 25th, which is, uh, in, which is a Tuesday. We wanted to avoid, uh, the concert day. Um, and, and there is the, there's a delay of several days due to the CML conference.
And, and, yeah.
And Jim travel will be out, uh, Jim will be out. Um, and this would allow you, um, to have time to review and respond to the points that we discussed.
Am I going to get a list of those?
Yes.
All right.
I, I think by Friday. By Friday. So, um.
Well, I, I would, if, if we're going to do that, I would like to make a motion to have a follow-up meeting on, on June 25th. Special, special, special meeting.
It's a special meeting.
Special meeting and, uh, and 6:00 PM?
I think that's what we agreed to.
June 25th, 6:00 PM to, uh, uh, hear the responses from Mr. Foreman on the points discussed.
Second.
We have a motion and a bunch of seconds. Um, Ms. Erickson, do you need time to write this down, or?
Yeah. I'm just placing.
I did. I motioned, and then a lot of people second. You can pick any, pick one. Get used to us.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so what do we want to do in the meantime, um, while Mr., uh, while we're, while we're waiting for this, um, meeting to take place? Any suggestions from council?
I have a couple thoughts. Um, I would recommend um, that the town manager, Mr. Foreman, is, uh, placed on paid administrative leave until the 25th to provide dedicated time for him to respond to the questions. Um, and discussion points which were identified in the executive session, and that we, um, assign or appoint with concurrence some other staff members to be acting, uh, town managers in, in the meantime.
Until the 25th.
Until the 25th.
So are you making a motion, or this is just a discussion?
No, it's just the start of discussion.
Okay, um, is there any other suggestions, uh, or support for that, uh, suggestion?
I, I look. I agree with you, uh, Councilmember Kimpel, I'll get there. And I, and I, I think it's, it's a good idea because that way there isn't any, um, there aren't any distractions or, you know, things that can happen in the interim so that all attention is paid to the, the performance issues.
And just a couple clarification questions, and, and this might be for whomever. Um, is it looked on? Um, I, I just want to confirm that it's not looked at, looked at negatively, and it doesn't imply, um, a pre the word.
There's no direction, uh, no, no permanent direction here at all, is what you're trying to say?
No, I think he's trying to, we're not, make it so that we're not punishing.
Yeah, it's not a.
It's not possible.
Right, right, right. No, no.
So what is this?
Excuse me, I got to ask a question, just a point of clarification. If you put me on administrative leave, typically I don't have access to town hall.
That's correct.
Yeah. So how do I answer these questions?
We will get you the questions.
No, I'm, I'm saying, how do I answer them? I need staff to be able to answer some of these questions.
Mr. Cole?
Good, good point. Uh, we need to make available to Mr. Foreman the, the information uh, and opportunity to be able to respond.
Would it be appropriate for maybe Mr. Foreman to go through you with the questions, and you reach out to staff? Would that be the most appropriate way to get that information, or?
Or, or acting?
Or, or acting?
Now, we get, we get Mr. Foreman, uh, with a list of the, the issues.
Right.
Uh, and then I talk with Mr. Foreman and see what support he need to get responses, and then we go from there based on what he believes he needs, whether it's access to information, computer files, other files, individuals.
And if somebody, if somebody needs access to him for town business, how would that look?
Uh, I think, I think we need that access.
Right, so, so there is sort of a, it's a limited two-way access. Mr. Foreman needs things, we will give him a, a, a pathway to get the data, and if somebody, the, the, the acting, uh, town manager needs stuff out of Mr. Foreman's head, um, they have access to him.
Yes, that's.
That answered my question.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, so, um, then if there's agreement on that, we would need a, a motion to.
Well, do we move?
No, don't bring that.
Huh? Do we?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Yes. But do we discuss who's going to be?
No, yeah, let's make the motion first.
The motion has to pass. We're. Order.
Okay.
I don't know how the rubbage is, but if you guys are looking to, I, I would say that, uh, I would make a motion to put Mr. Foreman on paid, uh, administrative leave through the 25th, and we can have our follow-up meeting, uh, to discuss the, to get his response to the points. Do I need a, a, a detail about communication, or is this just going? Okay, that's my motion then.
Discuss what that would be.
Second.
Ms. Erickson, when you're ready.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Okay, now to the point of our discussion related to, Tim, uh, uh, acting town manager, um.
Sorry, real quick. When, when does this take effect?
It's effective immediately.
Okay.
Well, you just voted on it.
Okay.
Um, I guess we probably should modify that language to reflect the date, uh, begins, since we reflected a date that it ends. Or is it assumed that it starts at the time?
I assumed it started. Um, there's any uncertainty, you could.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to ask if you, if, if. Okay. Um,
Who, who will be having?
Who, who from, we have, who, what directors are online and in person?
Cyberstalk can figure out.
In the next moment.
In the next moment.
Well, I, I, I see a few.
I see three directors.
Four.
Four, oh, sorry, I didn't see you there. Um, do we have?
Five, yeah.
We have Will, so there's five, and we, do we have, um, I don't see, uh, I see Dan, now is that, is that our Dan? No, it's not our Dan, is it? It's, I don't know.
No, he's unverified.
Um, so we don't have, um, uh, Laura Hogan, Erica, or, um, Dan Ungaliter, those would be the three remaining. Um, okay. Um, given, uh, so we're in a position now, we have to have an acting town manager. It, um, would be uh, limited in the length of time to the point where we will meet, uh, again on the 25th and determine a, any next actions, uh, then, so it, it goes at least until the 25th. Um, any volunteers?
Well, it might be a wise idea to, it might be a wise idea to divide the duties as well and not add this whole burden to one director.
Right, so.
Presumably, they're, they're doing their, their day job.
Right.
And then on tacked on is town manager.
Correct.
Okay.
Acting.
Acting.
To the 25th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep the boat afloat.
Yep, um, so I know, um, at the very least, we've got a couple of people based on their qualifications, uh, educationally, they, but I don't know about the rest of them. I, I, I don't know all the, all the, the people and what their backgrounds are, so I know that, um, our chief of police came highly qualified educationally. Um, I know Madeline, you have got the same background educationally. Um, I don't know that.
Is that, is that like a master's of public administration is what you're saying, or what, what kind of education?
Correct, they, they both have masters. I don't know, I don't know about, uh, Ms. Hogan, and I don't know if you can provide context to that.
Didn't, didn't, wasn't Madeline, didn't, wasn't there something with, with Lynn Park and her? I, no, I'm just asking.
And, and Tom, he, you were I don't want to say the wrong Navy rate.
Right.
No, no, rate, rate, rate.
Something.
He was. Um, but, but what we would like, I think with the, what we're talking about is, uh, not having one, but having two that would divide the departments, uh, so that the burden isn't on one person.
Well, I think Mr. Foreman was going to try to answer about Ms. Hogan's, uh, education.
Good morning, interrupt. Um, yeah, I think she has, I know she has a bachelor's degree. I'm, I don't believe she has a master's of public administration.
Uh, well, Mona's right here, and Will's right here. What are your guys' educational backgrounds, if I might ask? Okay.
Bachelor's. Computer engineering technology.
So Mona does have a master's.
Well, Mona is also in the middle of, uh, audits?
Audit.
Budget?
Got it.
Understand. Okay. Um, well, uh, Tom, what's your bandwidth like? Yeah, we're on, we're on the record.
You know what I can tell you, because I've been to this before.
Yes, you have.
The way it was handled in the past was the director basically ran their departments, and when a decision was needed at a town manager level, then the senior directors would get together, they'd figure out what's the best course of action, and whether or not we needed to let the mayor or council know how that was going to go. And, uh, as long as it's a short period, I think that's how we've gone through this many years ago. But I don't remember us having a temporary manager in the past unless you have contracted with a company that provides it. But this is a short period, so I would think that a couple of the directors could probably handle things as they came up.
Okay, I do appreciate your insight, given that nobody here has gone through this before. Um, I'm still inclined for legal and financial reasons, um, to, to have at least one person, if not two, but at least one in, in the, the role, because, uh, if there's a contract that, for whatever reason, would need to be signed, or a, uh, checks that need to be signed, um, uh, there's only, uh, I want somebody who is reporting to the council to have that check writing ability, and right now, Mr. Foreman is the only person that I know of who reports to the council that can write checks.
So if it's Mike just, I don't want to say he got killed in a car accident, so Mike, Mike just.
Oh, this just went left really. But win the lottery, how about that one?
My, my son-in-law got in a car accident today on the freeway, sitting there, somebody pulled out in the back, I'm at 55 miles an hour, so it's possible, right? He's okay, right?
It almost happened yesterday, and somebody swerved into me yesterday.
What, what, I mean, there.
Just missed me.
There should be some type of succession plan. I mean, we've got some competent people sitting back there, and the, you know, my, my first zero goes into Madeline, only because I know that there was, she was looking at possibly Woodland Park or something that I heard about a year or two ago. Um, and she has that kind of a background. Is it?
She would eliminate you and/or somebody else, would you be interested in doing that? Would you be willing to split that role with her?
Go ahead.
Big up.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, you know, no, nothing against the chief, but to put that on the chief's shoulders along with being the chief of police with, I, I, I don't think that that's a good idea. I'd, I'd rather go with like Tom or Laura instead. Um, not, no offense to you, chief, but I think you have enough on your plate that, and there could be other things that come up that you have to handle and and that's, and do.
And that's why there's two.
And I'm not, but I do have a great succession, succession plan in the police department, and a great command staff that can pick up a lot of the slack. Yeah, that's.
Yep, um, okay, so we've got two, two agreeing participants. Mona has indicated that, well, we know what's going on with Mona and budget and, and whatnot, and I don't anticipate this going longer.
Yeah, we'll load her with that.
Right.
Yeah.
And, um, Tom didn't like really say he wanted to do it, he just gave us the background of how it was done before, which.
He wasn't jumping up and down.
I would say if the, if the council asked me to do it, I would say yes.
Okay, so we've got three potentials for what I'm hearing would be a good idea to divide it up. Maybe we divide it up into the three.
And you're almost.
And you're back to work. Okay, kind of a point person.
I mean, I, I do like, I do like Tom's input. Great idea. Uh, if, if we went that direction, then I would just want one person designated to sign checks.
In contract.
In contracts, and that could be like Madeline.
And make decisions that pertain to the upper hand of the town.
I still think you, you need, you need a belly button to poke. You, you need someone to poke.
What? Where are you?
Where are you? You're both coming up with some really poor. Hit by a car, belly buttons to poke.
It's 10 o'clock. Give me a break. Give me a break.
Let's make a motion for Madeline and chief to split it.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was for Madeline and chief to split it. I'm not sure.
Okay. And, and chief to split the duties of, and, and of the town ma-
Acting?
Acting, acting town manager through the 25th of this month.
Still second.
All right, so there is a motion and a second.
Do we need to talk about splitting up? Are they going to do this, or do we go through this first and then talk about that?
I think that.
I think it was.
Digging this.
Right, it was motion, motion to appoint, and then I would like them to tell us what they think is their best.
We bring them up like that, okay, let's, let's go through that then.
Well, first we have to vote a motion.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay, so whenever you're ready, Ms. Erickson.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is seven to zero, so, um,
Feedback.
Feedback, um, on, uh, assignments. Yes, we're.
Doesn't have to be.
Job description, no, just, um, there, how many departments do we have? I mean, I know that, Tom, you've got a director underneath you, right? We didn't even consider Jeremiah, he's not Ivan's assistant. So how, is, is yours split as far as departments go, or is it just public works?
Uh, mainly, I'm handling the, the day-to-day stuff with the water department, then I oversee Jeremiah with the streets and fleet, and then Madeline handles all the parks, parks department.
And facilities, right, the, the actual buildings. Okay.
And do you have a lot going on right now, Madeline?
I do, but I have great staff as well, and I believe with the rest of the director's team that we can, we can make this work.
Okay, so, planning, we have planning department, IT, human resources, finance, police, public works, what am I missing? Administration, um.
Looking at the website, it's looked, the departments are, but at least on the website, cemetery, code enforcement, finance, human resources, municipal court, parks and food space, planning, police, public works, town clerk, town manager, water department, those are the departments that are, at least are listed on.
The cemetery falls under parks, doesn't it? I'm sorry? Oh, you have, you have cemetery? Oh, okay, but, but the, if we're going to bury somebody and they want to buy a plot that doesn't exist, it falls under?
Yeah.
They don't exist anymore.
They stack them up there, doesn't matter.
We have a fairly distinct, uh, footprint in the town that a lot of the departments are in this building and somewhere in another building. Then it might be an easy way to kind of delineate who's going to be what, based on where they're located.
Okay. That's, that's a nice one.
You know, is it split?
Is it split fairly?
Split evenly.
Okay.
If I were to look at my experience and what I'd be comfortable with, it would be finance, HR, and IT. Uh, that would leave planning in this building and clerk and admin, and then public works and water, which is sort of for, for you now.
And planning.
Planning would be the one that's left here that I wouldn't take.
Right, yeah, Madeline's got some planning experience here, so.
Yes, she does. Are you comfortable with that, Madeline? Okay. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
If they're in agreement, and obviously if there's something that comes up.
If you have to deep it out, bring it here.
Written from them to, can we have them type up something that sort of formalizes the?
Mr. Cole, what do you think about, um, a formal letter that's drafted, um, designating their roles and responsibilities, and, uh, that way they, they can put it in their file that they have done this during this period of time?
I think that'd be a good idea. I, I would start with a motion that sets those areas that were just discussed that are under each of the.
So you need a, so, I, I, I can, I've.
Did you write it down, or no? I did.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
No, he, well, I just underline HR, clerk, IT, finance, admin. Did you say something else, chief?
The four I was talking about taking would be police, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
IT, finance, and HR.
Police, IT, finance, and HR.
And then.
And the rest would be under Madeline?
Yes.
So planning, public works.
Public work. Public works, water.
That's public work.
Public work.
Parks, so public works, admin, planning, and parks. Is that right?
Admin, planning, parks, and.
Of facility, parks and facilities?
Oh, right.
Okay.
Just someone.
Do we need a motion or two motions? One motion? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to assign the following departments to the acting.
Co-acting.
Co-acting.
Co-acting town manager, chief of police. The departments would be police, I T, finance, and H R, and to the current director of parks, et cetera, co, co-acting manager, Madeline Vandenhook, planning, public works, water, parks and facilities, and admin.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll give Ms. Erickson a minute to.
Yes. Absolutely. I could never remember it.
Second though?
I did.
Thank you. Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mary Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Cromic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes. Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we have, we have no other business other than public comment. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. I don't think there's anybody here that would like to make a public comment. So we will go online and see if there's anybody online that would like to make a public comment.
There are no hands raised online.
Okay.
Still. See if anybody here wants to. Not, rather than.
I'm sorry?
Rather than assume that nobody wants to make, make public comment that, that are here, I'll just see if anybody here wants to make public comment.
We, well, I'm just going off the agenda.
Okay.
And there, there was no, I, I don't know if this was by design to not have council comments, but it's not on the agenda, and we didn't modify the agenda, so. Oh, well, okay. Is there anybody here who would like to make public comment?
Said no.
From the public.
You doubted your eye.
Okay. All right, well, I sort of got a, sort of a eye waggle that was. Okay, so then I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
We're adjourned.